This meeting is being recorded.
All right, we're good to go.
Okay, so being six thirty on Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-three, and have a call up in the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for this evening. First item is called order. Second item agenda is a public hearing. Before we go to the public here, I'll read the town manager's instructions real quick. So pursuant to the town manager's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather on place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No unpleasant attendance of the members, no unpleasant attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every is made to ensure the public adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded within forty-eight hours with post a link in the recording on town's website and our social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board participating remotely, Patrick Driscoll, the chair, Mr. Raymond Jimian, Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, and Mr. Ted Haley, the associate member. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will be participating remotely. Stan O'Brien, the town Bridgewater planner, Mr. Greg Tansy, the town engineer, and Mr. Stephen Salari, the building inspector. At this time, everyone's mic is unmuted. It is muted, excuse me. The board's mic should be unmuted to the whole meeting, and as the items appear on the agenda, the project's representative's mic will be unmuted. It's a project with a public hearing. And allow us some public comment. We ask that you use the chat feature, ask your question, announce your name and your address and your question. The host will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the visit to this menu and be unmuted when the host recommended. Again, before speaking, please state your name and address before asking a question. You're on the phone, you can now smile now to raise your hands. So the first item and item two is a public hearing, two ten Broad Street. This is two ten Broad Street Realty LLC. The site plan, a special permit, this is continued from August third, August seventeenth, September seventh, September nineteenth, October nineteenth, November second, November sixteenth, and December sixth. Before we move forward, Mr. Brian, would you like the applicant to request a removal of a special permit here?
Um, I think the, I think the applicant should um, kind of provide an explanation, and I think then we can go to down the road of kind of explain the, the non-necessity of the special permit at this time. But um, I know the applicant and the owner are here, and I think that they can better represent the situation.
At this point, Mr. Brian, if you turn it off to the applicant, and we can make their presentation.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is Eric Dias. I'm a registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering with an office in West Bridgewater. I'm also a resident of Bridgewater. With me tonight is Janesh Patel, representing the owner of the project. Again, just a quick refresher, this is two ten Broad Street. It's the Napa Auto Parts Building, or the former Napa Auto Parts Building, right across from the Roach Brothers Plaza. We've, as you read, we've been continued a number of times, but we've been before the board probably three times now, I believe. I think this is our fourth. And we've hashed out the details of the site plan pretty well. The last time we were here, I think we were generally comfortable with the site itself. But we were seeking a special permit to allow off-site parking at the Go Gas Station. And I think that was the sticking point more than anything for two reasons. One, I think the board wasn't entirely comfortable with the mechanism to ensure that that parking arrangement would remain in perpetuity. And two, I think the pedestrian travel pathway from the Go Gas Station to the Napa Auto Parts building left some concerns for the board. So since that time, we've been working. Well, we've done a couple of things. The, as you know, the town zoning bylaws have changed. In the, in turn, the parking requirements have changed. So we've updated our plan to reflect the current parking requirements, and I'll bring up the plan in just a moment and walk you through the changes that we made. The other thing that we did was we reconfigured the internal layout of the building so that we could it would correspond with the amount of parking that we have available on the site. So we, that allows us, as you alluded to before with Mr. O'Brien, to drop the request for the special permit. So I'm going to bring up my, my screen very quickly just to show you folks what we did. And hopefully, everybody can see the site plan. Can everybody see that? Okay, so the site plan, the only changes we've made to the site plan is where this parking space is shown now. We formerly had a landscape area here. We got rid of that landscape area. We added one parking space here. We added one parallel parking space here that's going to be designated as used by employees only. We also, this is an overhead garage door in the existing condition. We added a double door, and I'll show you why on the architectural plan. And we've added a two-yard rollout dumpster, but we've enclosed it with some screening. It would be suitable to the town, probably a small fence that screamed or something like that. This would roll out to be picked up at certain hours and then put back in its place. With regard to the, the layout of the building itself, I'm going to bring up this plan because I think this shows it the best. So as it stood previously, we had two retail units in the front of the building. Those remain. If you recall, in this area before, we had a print shop set up basically that had a separate parking requirement for it. And this back wing over here was a personal training studio. We got rid of those two things. So the way that it's going to work out now is we'll come into the main vestibule. You'll go either right or you'll go left into one of two retail spaces. Everything else that's shown here in white is either a hallway, a bathroom, or a storage area. The blue area that you see here coming off the double man door, these are going to be offices for the owner of the building himself. And that's all that's going to happen here. When we do the math, that requires us to have, I believe it's twelve parking spaces by Shane's memo that he produced, and we are proposing to have thirteen with one designated right here as employee parking only, which would more than likely be used by the owner to access this office. So I believe, I'm hopeful that that satisfies what the board's major concerns was about this. By being able to drop out the special permit, I think it simplifies things a little bit. We're self-contained, and we're just going to focus on this property and nothing more.
Mr. Dias, just looking at that plan, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So at our, at our last meeting, I think Mr. Geller wasn't here, but he made some good comments about traffic and vehicles potentially on Broad Street. I see the plan is still showing, showing a Cape Cod burn at the last meeting. Did we talk about that helping a concrete? Um, vertical granite burn, precast concrete, the vertical granite? So that there, so that you could easily roll up that into Broad Street to drive over that long and?
You know, now that you're saying that, that is ringing true. I believe the CCB is just a a detail on the plan that didn't get changed. We could certainly, if the board was comfortable, condition that be a vertical granite curb through there.
I just, I just think that, you know, Mr. Geller made a good point before you were showing the stops and with a Cape Cod burn behind it. And then we talked about the, you know, those those, those, those stops potentially in the street on the sidewalk. And then we talked about just the Cape Cod burn of that mono, like we're not having enough. You know, you know, it just, it's just not, it just rolls up to, and I think, and I think if we could do that, vertical granite, we could always condition it, but I think that's kind of how we ended up.
Just a question for you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, the main concern is along the front here, and I don't think we have a problem doing vertical granite here. Would we be allowed to stay with the concrete curb on the siding or the Cape Cod burn on the sides, or would you prefer vertical granite all throughout?
I mean, I think vertical granite looks better. I mean, it's up to the board. I think, I think we definitely want it in that front, that corner area, so. But it's, I mean, it's a board decision.
Okay.
I mean, I, my preference is, I think that Mr. Geller wasn't here and he made some comments. I thought that was a great comment, and it's just, it's a busy area. The Cape Cod burn is easily driven over and, and just to try to contain the traffic and, and keep everybody safe, I think it's the best, the best option.
Sure. Now, now that you mentioned this, I do remember that conversation, and I apologize. It's just a
It should probably, it should probably be around that island when you come in too, just extend it around the island and, and then, and then the line that you show right there, right there.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
No, we can make that happen.
I shouldn't speak for Mr. Geller, but Steve, that's kind of what you were getting at, correct, when you made that comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, that, that is a comment that I made. I also made a comment about putting some type of vertical barrier around all the plant areas because just cutting out, just cutting out the existing asphalt, cars, plows, they will drive over that. I'd also ask where, and I can, I know that you did the loom and the seed that divides the two areas. We all know that's, that's just going to get run over by tractor trailers going back and forth out back and everything else. If there was something else we could do with that area to divide it, I, I think you're just wasting money by cutting out that little strip of concrete because unless you're going to plan on putting irrigation out there, I don't think your loom and seed is going to last.
Well, I think a couple of things that we might be able to do in that regard is we could curve it, just like we're curving the rest of the parking lot. Or we could even throw some ballards there, a small row of, row of ballards in between the two in the loom and seed areas. That way cars
I'd rather see, I'd rather see curbing than a row of ballards. I mean, if you're going to put a row of ballards up, you might as well just put a guardrail up, you know, it's the same. Same thing, so.
Understood.
Mr. Geller, you good?
With that, with that portion, yes.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll open up the board comments at this point and questions. So go ahead, Mr. Geller, if you have more.
So another comment I have is, is, you know, and I, I appreciate, I know we're site plan approval, but in your, in your first presentation to us, you, you were planning on doing a lot of work to the building facade. And I, and I see you're really not doing as much work to the building facade right now to try and clean it up and make it a little bit more modern. You know, right, right now, the building is a metal standing seam building. Very plain doll, we share, you know, warehouse type thing. That you plan on putting panels on large portion of the building in the back, or do you plan on leaving it as is?
Absolutely. We, we plan on remodeling the exterior. So in the front, it's going to have new paneling, and then we're going to paint the back. And we're trying to see if we can make it so we don't even see the back portion from the front, but it's going to get a facelift, the exterior.
So, so, so what you're submitted in this package is not what it's going to look like?
We, we haven't done the exterior plans yet, just because we, we didn't know how long it was going to take, and it's been back and forth, but as soon as, you know, if we move forward now, then I can have an I mean, we can go through that process, but the end goal is to have
The initial architectural plans, I got to tell you, look better than, than what was submitted in this package.
Sure. In this package
It goes over the buildings.
Sure, sure. And in this package, we were trying to stick with the Benjamin Moore color palette, right? And I think our architect just picked a couple of Benjamin Moore, but ideally, we're going to try to match across the street, and we're going to try to keep it similar to whatever their palette is, and that's, I think
Yeah, no, and, and I appreciate if this was a presentation for the color palette. I, I just last, the last presentation, you, you removed that whole facade that was overhanging the sidewalks. It seems to be back in this presentation. Part of the, part of the overhang of the facade actually kind of interferes with your handicap access in front of your handicap space. You know, so I, I didn't know if your plans were to tear down that portion of the facade like you originally
The front, we're going to tear it down. We're going to tear it down. It's in bad shape. It's not going to last. It, it needs to be torn down.
Okay. I mean, I, I know that you are going to, you know, you have to probably bring your building envelope up to the new energy codes and everything else, so. All right, that, that was just a little concerning that you were keeping the building the same look of what it looks like now and just painting it, so.
Yeah, no, no.
So my other, my other concerns were, were with the granite curbing, and, and I appreciate that you're going to do that. And doing something with that piece of, piece of material between the two properties that just, we all know isn't going to last. And thank you for listening to our comments about the screening in of the dumpster and everything else. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Good comments. So just, just so I'm clear, Shane. So these are, in, in Mr. Tansy, these are not, so the architectural we're looking at today are not going to be what the building looks like?
The exterior, no, we're going to try to, we're going to stick to the Benjamin Moore color palette, which the board had required. But no, these are not the final.
We talked about the historical palette, which, which I'm talking about, and I think you complied with, but
historical.
I'm talking about architecture. I mean, as far as windows and doors and siding, is, is this a an accurate representation of what it's going to look like, or is it not?
Windows, doors, yes. Just the siding, no. We're not changing any windows. I mean, we're going to get new windows, but they're going to look and feel the same.
So is that? So just to clarify what Mr. Geller was asking, so. I, I remember on the prior plans, it showed that the exterior skin of that metal was going to be replaced in certain areas. The shingles would be replaced up front. The clampboard was going to be replaced. That's also happening, but I'm, I'm trying to find out on these plans, has that been removed from this set of plans? I hope that, that worked.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I, I didn't hear that. Can you say that again one time?
Sure. My question is, is what's being shown here now? The siding, the siding, the windows, the skin of the building, the metal skin, it is going to be replaced, but it's not being shown on the plan. Is that correct?
Correct. The overhang is going to be gone. It, it's going to, we're going to take off the overhang. We're going to have to reason.
That shingle overhang.
Right.
Single overhang is, is, is not represent, representative of what it's actually going to look like, correct?
Is, is it possible? Can I share my screen? Can I do that?
Sure.
You let me do that? I'll, I'll just make things a little easier here.
Can you guys hit, can you guys hit me already or am I coming in about eight?
You're coming in and out sometimes.
Okay. Can everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
So this is what you, you submitted to us now, which is essentially what the building looks like. Okay, when you came before us in August, your presentation in front of the building looked like this.
Correct.
Is the building, is, when, and the building in the end, is it going to look more like this?
More like this.
Or is it going to look more like this?
The previous one.
Okay. That's, that's what, that's what Mr. Driscoll and myself were getting at. It is
Correct.
I, I, I really hope it's not going to look like this, and you're going to get, and you're going to make it a little bit more modern like this.
Absolutely. Personally, I hate, I don't like the overhang either, so it's going to go.
Well, I think it interferes with your sidewalk. I think, I think it interferes with your, with your handicap ramp, your, your sidewalks coming down on both sides. So that's that, that's, 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 that was one of my, my big issues of, you know, we got, you sent us something that you're going to do, and then you submitted something that you want, and I, and I get it. You did it because you want to make sure that you're moving forward and everything else, so, and I can appreciate that.
So Mr. The, the modified plans, the updated plans that were submitted prior to this kind of plans, architecturally, are what we should be voting on. But the color palette chosen on the current plans, on what I actually would put on the plans prior, correct?
That sounds correct, yes. It's the layout, the prior layout that was shown without the overhang, but the general color palette is going to be the historic Benjamin Moore color palette.
Okay, now what about that garage door to the left? That changed as well. In the, in the first rendering, which was more modern, there's still a big garage door there. Now there's a glass door shown. So the glass door will be in place for that now?
That is correct. The garage door goes away, and it ends up a double man door.
Okay. So we just
I, I would ask, I would ask that you, you match the panels of the back of the building to match, so it all blends, so it looks, so it doesn't look like it was a garage door.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's it, absolutely.
Any other good questions?
Just a couple of quick comments. I just, excuse me, folks. Just for clarification, the whole issue of parking at the gas station is dead, correct? It's not, okay. Secondly, when you showed the, the picture of the drawing of the interior, you showed two offices, I believe, and a good amount of dead space. My question is why the dead space?
One of the proposed tenants is going to be a UPS store. They have a good amount of storage that they need. It's not really storefront. It's not an area where retail happens. If you've ever been in a UPS store, well, there's a counter. You go in there, it is very small customer space, then the rest of it, the back house is just mostly storage.
So in effect, it'll be part of one of the offices?
One of the retail spaces, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Tansy, and Mr. Salari?
So I provided an updated memo as well as a draft decision up for the board. I know there's been some comments for the board in terms of changing some concrete burn to vertical granite curbing, as well as having architectural plans of matching what's actually going to be built. Some of the, one of the other suggestions I provided, I caught in the site plan. I think it was page two on the most recently updated plans. It talked about a saw cut for a landscape area where that parking location is. I sent it over to the applicant as that could be just updated and removed and to show that there's a parking space located there. Additionally, too, I know there's a, that new parking space that allows for the applicant to have thirteen spaces of the required twelve. I would also kind of suggest that that one space be kind of also used as a loading area because there currently isn't really a loading area on this plan, and I think ideally that could be a quality location for a landscape area. I mean, I'm sorry, a loading area. Other than that, I think the applicant has provided these updated plans and having many discussions about parking counts and what's the parking counts are. You know, they no longer need that special permit that would be required as that special permit is only pertinent to if the applicant is looking for additional parking or requires additional parking offsite. So our purview is kind of stuck, not stuck, but with, we're primarily looking through site plan review now, and we asked for the applicant to also at some point withdraw their application for a special permit as as it's no longer necessitated. And like I said, provided a memorandum to the board as well as a draft decision for the board's consideration as requested by the board many meetings ago.
One more quick question. Lighting, has that been updated at all? What, what lighting do we have? Nighttime lighting here?
We do have a photometric plan that I can the applicant provided, I believe, in the August plan set, but let me see if I can pull that.
Needs a requirement?
Uh, yes, you know, they can't go beyond the requirement of lighting offsite, and their lighting is totally on their property as required. Let me pull that up quickly.
But it meets the what night skies requirement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a photo, photometric plan, so it shows areas that are illuminated on the site as well as types of structures, so that would be included.
Greg, in our decision for the the vertical granite, should, should we, should they, should we reference the detail on our subdivision rules and regs so that we, we have that spec? You know, so much reveal and so much thickness, just so it's that properly done?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's an excellent idea.
Any other comments? Mr. Salari, are you okay with it from a zoning standpoint? Mr. Tansy, you know?
Um, yeah, myself and Shane went over the parking and the changes, and yeah, it, we were pretty, that was pretty much the only issue on the zoning end was the parking and it, the new plan and the new use work out to the amount of spots.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's the, the best asset to this, or improvement on this project is to being able to keep all the parking contained on the site itself and not have to walk five hundred feet to meet the parking requirements.
Okay, so, so Brian, how do you want to handle this? We have architectural, we have two sets of architectural plans that need to be meshed, and I think in addition to those, that meshing of those two architectural, the colors have to come from one. But we're using the rendering of the other. But the garage door is going from one to the, the other?
I would say, I, well, the board, I think, has some options. They can request, you know, that the applicant come back and provide updated architectural plans. We could require prior to the endorsement of the plans, the receipt of updated architectural plans that meet kind of what's going to be done there from a side elevation and a front elevation standpoint. You know, I, I think it could go either way. I think with the fact that we have site plan approval, there's you know, we're kind of looking at the site itself, not necessarily the architectural features, but we do have some jurisdiction in terms of what's going to go there because, you know, the site and the location as well as how this property looks accordance to abutting properties is important to the community. So I, I'm fine with either way in terms of the boards. I know we also have we have to look for some public comment as well as this, as we still have the public hearing open. So I'm, I'm open to both methodologies. Is, I just want to make sure that the board feels that either or is comfortable, and I'm happy to bring those plans before the board or the applicant can provide those boards, plans before the board as to provide some comfort because we don't want to get into a situation where that the, the most latest plan is what's built because ideally, we want something more similar to, similar architecturally to what was produced in August as Mr. Geller referenced too.
I'm stoked. Why don't we see if there is any public comment before we go any further? If there's anybody someone in the public that would like to speak, you're going to identify yourself.
Oh, you muted yourself, Pat.
Hi, I'm Carl, and I have no comment.
Do you have any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Let me check the chat. I do not see anyone in the chat, and I do not see any virtual hands raised at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, what are the, the board's thoughts on wrapping this up tonight?
I, I have one more, Mr. Chair, one more question for the applicant. Are, are there any plans for Are are there any plans uh, for? Building signage or are you just, and I know, I know I'm hopping on the building, because I just, I'd really like to see it become a really nice looking building. In that, in that section of the town. Do you plan on allowing building signage, or is just the signage for your tenants going to go under pylon sign?
Uh, just. Signs for my tenant.
Do you, do you plan on it, and 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 it could, it could be in part of your design if you put, plan on putting like a sign van on the, on the building itself. You know, I I'm just, I'm just asking that question, I I know, you know, like I said, I wanted to be a nice looking building. Better than what it looks like now, I'm just, I'd hate to see a nice building and get a bunch of signs thrown on the front of it.
Sure, and and we can, I mean, we can agree to. Having it non-illuminated or.
I understand, and I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just want, I want you to, I want you to really think about when you blend these plans together. Mister Driscoll, I mean Mister Chair, I'm going to want to. I I'm fine with the site plan approval, I think it's fine, I I think as long as we go to granite curving and all the other curving that we're, that we're asking for. But I'd really like to see a final rendered set of plans of what this building is going to look like.
So that's, that's a good question, um. On the site plan, there is no freestanding sign. Pro- proposed, do you plan on proposing a free sign in the future?
There's, there's a monument sign in the landscaping on the front.
I'll pull up. On uh, this plan.
Right, that's, that's the sign I also asked, that it not be sitting so far on the street, so when people pulling out, it's not blocking their, their vision of Route eighteen.
So that should be moved back?
Well, it it can comes close to the zoning, allows it to go. You know, as long as it's not, as long as it's not. As long as it's not blocking vision of oncoming traffic of cars trying to pull in and out.
Mister Solari, how, how far out the street is that?
I don't have right in front of me, Pat, but I thought it was around six feet. Um, I'll, I'll have to check, I don't have the book in front of me at the moment.
Yeah, and 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 it can also be up on, I I believe it's, I mean, it can also be up on a couple of pylons that you'd be able to see underneath it. Instead of a full block, blocking your vision. I just don't want to picture cars coming down there and somebody trying to pull out, and they'll just respond into accidents all day long.
So. I I guess we'll leave it up to the applicant, do you, do you want us to try to muddle through this tonight, or do you want to just, I mean. I think all the issues are on the table, you want to just clean everything up and submit, or we meet again in two weeks?
Uh, I would like, I would like to wrap this up tonight, and whatever we said, I'm amendable to, like. It, they're all good suggestions. I live in East Bridgewater, I have a couple of businesses in Bridgewater. I I would like this building to look as nice as possible as well. I don't envision anytime, selling this building anytime, so I want it to look. Very nice, and that's, I mean, all these suggestions, and. If we wrap this up tonight, I can get my architectural plans and I can get, we can start working on the exterior rendering.
I think um, i- if I, if I may just recap, because I think I can just help summarize a little bit. With regard to the site plan, it's, we're going to edge this whole parking lot with a vertical granite curving, so that could be a condition, that's pretty straightforward. Uh, with regard to the. The external renderings, we want to go with the August rendering. Replacing the garage door with the man doors and using the Benjamin Moore color palette. Is basically what we're looking for here, we want to get something that looks like that back to the board as soon as we can, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Something like that, I mean, if he decides to, if his architect really gets on boards and gets a little bit more creative with the building. I'm fine with that also, I ju- I just think you're. I I just really think what you, what was presented tonight compared to last time is just, it's, it's. Very apples and oranges, and I just. I'd like to see some consistency and I'd like to see a nice building, and I think that the applicant. And 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 owner is willing to do that.
Yeah.
Oh, the other, the other issue would be the sign, just make sure the sign is offset appropriately. And, and um, Mister Geller also made another comment that I jotted down, that he'd like to see more glass. In the area of that garage door, so it doesn't look like a garage door is filled in with one door, is that correct, Mister Geller?
Well, I wanted to, I want either, either glass around the doors or or the, he proposed to put panels on the building, so it should all blend, that was all the panels were there. And now those are going to be offices, so I'm assuming are those, do you, do you plan on those being solid doors, I mean.
Solid, solid, they, they're going to be. Double doors. And solid double doors, but it won't look like a garage door. When we're done, but.
So, so you don't want, you don't want it to look like another retail space that someone's going to walk to all the time.
Correct. Right, yeah.
Right, so I just, I just wanted to blend in. That's all, and 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 his, in his rendering, he's just showing it flat, no lines, no, no panels, no nothing, that's all. So I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave the design up to his architect, I'm not going to. You know, as much as I would want to sit and design his building, I'm not going to do that.
All right, so do we want to, does somebody want to make a recommendation on a direction this evening, to either move forward or to hold up?
Are you, are you asking the board or staff as well?
Um, I'll let me ask the board first.
Sure, I'll make the recommendation, this uh. Project has been with us for how many months we've. It's been moved forward, we've postponed it uh, seven or eight times, we've gone over. And I think we made enormous project and then project, and it's going to work. It's going to work. But I think that we should see a final set of plans before we actually prove it. So I would uh. Recommend that we um, make the final decision with the new set of plans at the next meeting.
One, one more, one more quick question. The, the packing on up front, after all the granite works done and everything else. I believe you're just proposing to. Um. Patch it and seal coat it all. They be repaved.
Uh, I believe the plan at this point is to patch steel coat and restripe, I don't think we're looking to repave at this point. Um, unless for some reason we structurally need to, and we get out there and take a hard look at it, but I don't think that's the case.
Is that noted on the plan?
It's, it's noted, ex- existing pavement to remain and be seal coated and restriped.
Okay, that's, that's how it was before, I just want to make sure that was still there, okay. Any other suggestions, like we have heard from Mister Jimmy? And staff, what are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with Mister Jimmy's uh, recommendation, um, you know, I think our decision. As well as kind of crafting in the draft decision I presented to the board. It does reference exhibits, and one of the exhibits is the architectural plan, so I I I do believe that, rather than kind of. Condition it based on something we may see, uh, I think the board's uh, within its purview to. Make their decision based on the information presented before them.
Yeah, it works for me.
I mean, I think we're there, we just, we just need these updates all updated, then they're resubmitted, right? Can you, Mister Patel, can you have the architectural done in two weeks and the site updated and everything, so we can sign off? If the board votes to endorse it?
I, I can have that in two weeks.
Uh, just to confirm, um, the meeting is in two weeks, but we would need to get all materials back to Shane's office in a week, is that correct?
Uh, I would leave that up to the board in terms of uh. Their ability to review, if, if they base that review on. Information that's. Uh, that we're talking about right now, whether it be the curbing, uh, the suggestion of. The. Oh goodness, uh, removal of that landscape area off the plan set. As well as the architectural plans, I don't see any issue that the board would need. Uh. I think as long as it's provided to the board in a. Reasonable manner. Um, I think that's okay, if the board is.
Sure, I think. We asked for that the week before, because if there's a technical review or something that staff has to perform. We're simply, we're simply just looking for updates, so.
I think as long as it comes, probably that Monday before the meeting, um, I think the, I can forward it along to the board.
So by Monday, just so we're clear, Janesh, we need to have architetchers back to them by Monday the sixteenth, by let's say noon time at the latest.
The sixteenth, yes.
Sixteenth, correct.
I mean, you can even. Repackaged what you, what you submit, you could even repackage what you submitted back in August and just update the color.
We'll, we'll, we'll clean it up and we'll get it back.
Is the board okay with this, correct?
Sounds good to me.
Mister Geller?
Yep.
Listen, all right, so, um. Do we have adequate time in terms of the, the permitting? Uh, expiration date?
Uh, I believe through the permitting expiration date, uh, through site plan review.
Site plan, we, we have, we've expired a. Clock, right?
Uh, for site plan review, there isn't a clock, it's a, the clock uh, expires when the year is the close of the public hearing. So as long as the public hearing remains open, there is no clock. Um, and that's actually just pertinent to, I believe, special permits. Um, and if the request is for special permitting, we would have seventy-five days, but if the request is going to be withdrawn. Then I think we're okay in terms of timelines.
All right, and the applicant's okay with the continuations in the next meeting, just for the record?
Yep, that's, that's okay.
And maybe you could also pass a letter asking us to. Remove the special plan as well?
I can do that, yes, in fact, I was just going to ask uh, through the chair if Mister O'Brien needs that, but it sounds like that's something that we should provide.
Anything on the records, because I'll be talking to the board during the planner's report of how important it is to have certain records.
All right, um, so do we have a most, is that meeting the?
That is correct, the eighteenth.
Is the board's okay with that, and we have no additional staff or board comments, and would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that, that we move this uh. Excuse me, um, to the eighteen, six thirty.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
Hi, Mister McDonald? May discussion? Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Jimmy?
Yes.
I'm yes. Thank you, I, I think we're almost there, so thank you.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Mister O'Brien, uh, next up on our agenda, we have planning board minutes from eleven two. And eleven sixteen.
Yep, November meeting minutes from last year.
Is, the, does anybody want to discuss these? Any comments? Any motions?
No, the truth, I forgot which meeting I missed, I'm not sure I can go down. I, one of them.
I believe, let me pull it up quickly.
It was the first meeting in December.
Oh, December, uh, no December meeting minutes on that one, right, well, let me pull up November. I know Pat wasn't at one of the meetings. I know one of the meetings Mister McDonald was uh, chairing.
I, I think, I think the law is that we can still vote on the minutes, though.
Correct, so at the November second meeting, it was Ray, Michael, uh, Stephen and MJ. And at the eleven sixteen meeting. We had everyone except for uh, Mister McDonald.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of eleven two and eleven sixteen?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
By Mister, by Mister Geller? May discussion? Mister McDonald? Mister McDonald?
Yes, I just think, yes, yep.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. Board committee and planner reports, Mister O'Brien?
Sure, thanks, so we got a busy meeting, I guess, in January, um, we'll have a new site plan review before us. Uh, that'd be the project at Zero Jasmine Way, also known as One Jasmine Way. Um, I sport around the materials to you guys. Um, but I also do have hard copies, if anyone is interested, I can mail that over to you guys. Um, so that.
Did you say, did you say you sent the materials to Jasmine Way?
Uh, yeah, I sent them in PDF format, yes. I sent to um. Early last year, didn't I? Or did I just send it over to?
I don't have anything. I don't, I don't recall seeing it either.
Let me.
That's all, I just want to get a chance to spin around, that's all.
Sure, no, I'll um. I may have just sent that over to. All right, um. And I'll get to that to you guys ASAP. Um. I'll send it to you guys tomorrow, um, for you guys' review. Or as well, I can mail that, uh, packets over. If anyone would like a physical copy. Um, so there's Zero Jasmine Way. Um, as well as, we've uh, received information from the town attorney that we. Uh, he's looking to go into executive session, um, at the next meeting to discuss a potential lawsuit or pending lawsuit. Of the planning board, um, so I'm. Going to see if we can open up the next meeting by going into executive session. Um, if that's fine, I'll post that item on the agenda. And I believe we have the subdivision rules and regulations as well on the next meeting, I sent around a. Redline draft of that recently. Um, as well as I'll have to provide some updates, uh, based on the conversation I had with the engineering department. Um, and one, a couple more things, uh, we do have a new director of. Planning in economic, uh, community and economic development coming on board, uh, Bob Ruley will be starting next Monday. Uh, he will be, I guess, attending some of the board meetings, I. Haven't had really a sit down, but we've had some discussions about potential matters before the board, but we're going to kind of. Ease him into the situations, but he'll appear before a couple uh, planning board meetings in the near future and kind of familiarize himself. Um, with that matters. Um, and additionally, uh, I don't think, I said at the last meeting, I didn't have the knowledge, uh, I did. Pass my, I don't think I let anybody on the board know, but I did pass my American institution of certification of planners. Some AICP certified, which is, I guess, the certification for the planner, so if you've been seeing that in my signature. It's the little acronym that makes myself feel important and fancy. It's all about, at this point in the game, it's all about the acronyms. It's all about all those things, I've, I've been handwriting next to my business cards, because I don't want to pay for new ones. Um, but that's what I got in my planner's report, if uh, anyone else has any questions, comments, or.
Shane, Shane, you've always been important in our eyes, whether you get.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Shane.
Thank you. Now I have YouTube proof.
Congrats, Shane.
Thank you.
Good work.
Appreciate it.
I, I think it's great, I think it's important, every time we tried to hire a planner in town, I always. Was hoping that we had AICP certification. And I don't think we've had it since the first planner we worked with, which was Greg Geman, so I, I think it's great, so. Congratulations.
Thank you, so I'll have to keep up with the credits, because it's not a forever thing. Uh, you know, I gotta attend those classes and stuff, so. Um, keep you guys posted, as well as other classes, I think it, just a healthy reminder, if you guys wanted to take any. Uh, CPTC. Training classes, I know in March they have their conference, I think they're restarting up at Holy Cross. Saint Patrick's Day weekend, which they typically have it, um, I'll keep you guys in the loop if you want to. St. Patrick's Day weekend, which they typically have it. Um I'll keep you guys in the loop if you wanna are interested in attending, or if they're holding it um as well. Uh but it's an all-day thing. You learn about planning, stuff, a bunch of board members are around, so I'll keep you in the loop um on the time and date of those.
So I just also wanted to mention, we have uh I received an email that I forwarded to Shane. And I can ask the town clerk to send it to us, but there is, there is a link, I believe. There's a number of us, I think I'm one of them that have expired in terms of their um ethics training, or what do we call it, conflict of interest?
Yeah.
So Shane, I don't know, I don't know if, I don't know if you can track, I know at one point we talked about it, you probably sent the link, and I apologize, but I, if we, if we could get that over to everybody, and if we have time to take it, take it. And if you haven't, if you haven't been sworn in and you've been reappointed or newly appointed, um Marley has, has reached out to it to to us about that as well, so.
Yeah, I'll check. I'll um, I'll find the file. Um I remember when I started here, Human Resources sent me over something, so um I'll, I'll, I'll bring up that link and resend it around.
Thank you. If there's no more discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
I'm yes.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.